Recording in progress.
Good afternoon and welcome to the nine eleven twenty twenty three Walton City Council work session. We, as you can see, we're down to four city councillors, so our planned item for work session or item number one prioritization of planning division work, we've postponed until we have more city councillors to weigh in on our priorities. So we're skipping to item number two, our low income utility bill assistance program. Discussion led by Don Hudson, welcome, Don.
Thank you, Mayor Bubidic, councillor Hillier, councillor President Pratt, councillor Brooks. Pleasure to be here tonight. I'm Don Hudson and the Assistant City Manager. And I just wanted to give you an update on a topic that we talked about during the budget process. If you recall, we set aside some money to do a low income utility billing assistance program. And we had talked at that point about contacting community actions and finding out what we could do. So we have contacted with them. They are very excited to partner with us. They will do the intake and income verifications for us because the low income level is sixty percent of the average median income. They would qualify somebody that qualifies that let us know, and then we would kind of track it on our own end. We are working through right now the agreements with them and they set us a proposal of the cost on it because obviously there is an administrative cost to it. And we are also working through the parameters, what kind of program we would set up. Staff is reaching out to other entities to find out what kind of parameters they set. You know, we could do a flat amount, let's say if someone qualified and it was three hundred dollars. And if their bill was one fifty, that that other hundred fifty would carry over to their to future bills. We could do a limit of the number of times per year someone would be able to be eligible for assistance. We could do a dollar cap. So we're just looking at what would make the most sense. We do have eighty thousand dollars budgeted between the water fund and the sewer fund. What proposal I'm going to throw out on the table tonight, if it's head nods, if we think that's appropriate, is we do have ARPA funds that would be eligible for this type of use. And so I'm proposing that would use about twenty thousand to start of ARPA funds before we dipped into the water and sewer funds. We still have a fair chunk of ARPA funds that we have not committed yet. And so I think that would fit in nicely with the the intent of that program as well as what our program would look like. If we did the same, so that eighty thousand dollars, so let me step back. Community Action let us know that they since October first of last year through about the beginning of August this year, they have served with their other assistance programs about two hundred and thirty twelfth and households. Now, we wouldn't be reaching out to all of those because I'm assuming a lot of that's rent assistance and maybe some electrical, the electricity assistance. So those wouldn't be, don't have water and sewer accounts. So we would not be reaching tho- that many households. We just don't know what that would look like. But with that eighty thousand, if we did this, a who had two hundred households, we're reaching out to about a four hundred dollar amount. So it's kind of gives you a size and scope potential. I don't know if it's even going to be two hundred households just because of the water and sewer, the type of accounts. But this would be one tool then Community Action would have in their toolbox when someone reaches out to them for assistance. And if they do have a water sewer bill with the city of Twalton, they would say that we have this money available as well. I did talk to him about Clackamas County because of course ten percent, about ten percent, and they are Community Action of Washington County. We are, they said they could probably make that work. They did when we were talking about CARES Act funding. And so they are on board with making sure that if it's a twolton resident, it's not going to matter which county they reside in. I talked to you before also about apartments and how that's a hard one for us to reach out if someone's got a utility bill that's just paying to their landlord. And Community Action said they have the same. They've been struggling for a long time trying to figure that problem out and they don't have a solution for that either. So we haven't been able to figure it out and we're not alone. On top of that, we are, we've talked in the past also about doing, starting backup shut offs for water service. And one of the things we wanted to have in place was the utility assistance program. We are hopeful to have this up and running in the next month plus the assistance program. And then we would start looking at shut offs after the first of the year. That gives us a couple of months to get in touch with the people that are on our our delinquent list and talk to them about their delinquent bill work workout, if there's an assistance potential for them. If it's a matter of a payment plan, so you know, we'll reach out to all those accounts and talk through and kind of work that out. And then we would look at after the first of the year, January, February timeframe of when we'd start shut offs again. I'll be back and talk a little bit more about that with you, but that's kind of our plan right now, given the conversations we've had in the past. With that, I think that's the part of the update I was looking for tonight, just to kind of give you the update, make sure we're right on board. I'll get kind of the the thought process of the ARPA, using ARPA funds first and then reaching into our our water and sewer funds.
Questions for Don? Councillor? Brooks?
Councillor Bridge. Um, thanks for the update and I think that ARPA is a good, that's a good use. I had like three questions. One was how much money would we have left with ARPA afterwards? The second one is how many people are poised to have their water shut off? And the third one is how many households are in the rears on their water bills?
To your first question about the ARPA funds, we have over a million dollars left uncommitted. So this would not drop us below that amount. It's one point two, I believe, is where that's at. As far as the shut off list, we have seen, been seeing that dwindle. So we haven't seen people pay it off. There, there are a hundred and forty accounts that are on that list right now, which is high for us. We're normally in single digits because of the way staff works and we send out a do the door hangers and all that, which we have not been doing. I still firmly believe that a number of these are not people that would need, necessarily need assistance. I don't know for all the reasons, but there's some people that there's no reason for them to be paying. They've got other commitments. But we would definitely want to reach out to them and find out how we could assist them if possible.
Thank you. Sounds good.
Other questions? Councillor President Pratt.
So would you just be reaching out to people with accounts in arrears then, delinquent accounts?
As far as the the direct one to one contact, we will advertise the assistance program when that's up and running.
Okay.
So they get in, I have talked about in putting it in the newsletter and so forth. And so we will do a campaign based upon that this assistance program is now up and running and available. But as far as before we go into shut offs in that process, that'll be the one to one touch with everybody.
Yeah, my concern was I'm thinking of maybe an elderly couple that they're paying the bill, but it's really hard for them. So if they were aware this program was there, that would be great.
Yep.
And then, and I'm fine with the ARPA money, but I would like to know, um, when do we have to spend the rest of that ARPA money?
It has to be committed by the end of twenty twenty four, calendar year twenty twenty four, and then spent by twenty twenty six. But we actually have to have commitments in place by December thirty first of twenty twenty four.
Okay, great. Thanks.
All right, I'm fine with the ARPA money too. I mean, like I said, it's three thousand, just a little chip off of it, and that's what the money was, you know, given to us for. So if you think you're gonna be, you said you're gonna have this up and running about a month, month and a half. You're gonna give us an update or let us know which, where you decide and how to allocate the money?
Yes, so when we get everything worked out with Community Action, unless there's a just a piece that I really need the direction on, I will come forward with you, have the step part of the agreement and here's what our perimeter looks like. And, you know, get feedback at that point.
All right. Any other questions for Don? Thanks, Don. Thanks for doing this. All right, that brings us to item three, Basalt Creek Parkland and Trails update, Ross and Rich, or is Rich just gonna support you from behind in the audience?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, councillors. Rich is here in case, uh,
We have a tough question.
He's got a, he's got an amazing amount of of knowledge on this topic and has done a ton of work to get us to this point. And so Rich is here. And if we need his knowledgeable, we'll call on him. So thank you. Thank you for for having us tonight at work session. The conversation tonight is really a backup in a look at high level view at what's been happening in Basalt Creek in terms of parks, parkland, natural areas, trails, trying to get ahead of of the changes and the new development that's taking place in Basalt Creek and provide, acquire and provide for those natural areas, trails and parks that will be needed now and to the future. So this is a quick overview of that, that sets up a conversation or the consideration for all of you on consent tonight for the acquisition of some property in Basalt Creek. So you're you're well aware of the Parks and Recreation, Basalt Creek Parks and Recreation Plan that was conducted by MIG, the same consultant that did our our Park System Plan, our Master Plan Update. And so this was in January of twenty two is when you accepted the the plan. And it informs the need for parkland specifically in Basalt Creek. And so we we intentionally waited to do this work until our our system plan was adopted. And then we had a better sense for what was happening in Basalt Creek per the Basalt Creek Concept Plan adoption. So we wanted to wait until after that for this work to take place. And so with this knowledge in this document and and the work that was done in our community, we received a lot of input, thoughts, ideas, hopes, dreams, aspirations for what could take place in Basalt Creek for parks. And so with this accepted by by you and developed by our community and stewarded by us as staff, we had a clear direction. And so the next slide shows you, oh, I can advance that. And here I am. This little device, yeah, Rich, Rich would know, would have known that. So you can see here just a a map, an overview map of the Basalt Creek area. The dash lines, of course, are connectors, connections on right of way and off right of way. Many of the sidewalks are are not your typical sidewalks. They're wide, twelve foot wide sidewalks that accommodate new modes of transport and families walking side by side and so that's, that's, you can see that both north, south and east and west, connecting the residential side of Basalt Creek with the center spine, if you will, that that canyon, that that natural asset that we heard loudly in our community was was really desirable. And then also takes people east to west over to the the employment land on the, on the west side of the of the Basalt Creek area and connects to the the main regional connector, the Ice Age Trail, that's on the far west side. You can see it in blue, blue dashed line. So that's a a quick overview of of what's in the document. The plan, of course, is much bigger than just one map, but gives you an idea. And on on the next slide, you'll see what we've done, really trying to. What we heard was we want natural areas, we want access to the Basalt Creek Canyon, we need to preserve those, that natural asset and at the same time provide active traditional recreation amenities like playgrounds, playfields, open space, swings, things like that, picnic shelters. So as we looked, the central, the central area really, really called out to us and was a main focus. And as you're all well aware, we've, we've taken some actions to to acquire parkland in that central area along that creek canyon. So you can see seven point nine, seven point six nine acres was acquired first at two, three, five, one, five southwest Boons Ferry Road, and then immediately to the north at six point three five acres was the second acquisition. And then tonight, for your consideration, the item that's pending is three point six three acres on the west side of of the Basalt Creek area in the employment land area. So you can see on this map, the oddly rectangular shaped section generally where the property that we've already acquired exists, right in that, right in that central area, accessible both from the east and the west sides of the of the Basalt Creek area and acting as a connector across, across the canyon, through the canyon, preserving natural areas. And the one for your consideration tonight under, under consent is the star on the far west side. This area as is really at a unique crossroads, at a confluence point within Basalt Creek that we saw this as a fantastic opportunity to think about the future infrastructure that doesn't exist there yet. How do we complement that with a a small park with this three point? Let me get the exact acreage, three point six three acres of land that could act as a a a confluence point. So we have a trail, the Ice Age Trail running north, south, really close to this property within, within less than a block. And we have, you can see the dashed lines on right of way connections east, west that this site is adjacent to. And then the next slide is a, is a zoomed in map. So you can see the, the red triangle area is that property. And you can see that the dash line is the, is the future Ice Age Trail connector. But you can also see the West commuter rail line running really close to the site that stirs up all sorts of interesting thoughts about what could exist there in the future. But but more importantly, you see the other dashed yellow line, what we're calling on this map, the Sherwood to Sandy Powerline Trail Future in parentheses, immediately adjacent to this, to this property. So we see this property really as a, as a, a new mode of transportation hub, if you will, a a support facility in the core of our employment land that where somebody can hop on a, an e-bike or a scooter or walk or ride their bike on this, these future trails that really this is, this property is at the intersection of that this is a place where you can find a bike rack, a picnic table, a restroom, a place to rest, grass, a small park area in the midst of of this area. And let's see, that's the next slide. Let's see, if if there's there a way Bates that we could zoom out just a little bit on that, that overview map? Oh, thank you. And the reason why I wanted to show you this is the property rests immediately to the north of the Basalt Creek road, Basalt Creek Parkway into the south of Tonkin and the the there's also a sliver not represented on this map that on the south side of Basalt Creek, there's a sliver of property that is, is coming to us in this, in this purchase. And so both of those, and you can see why, this was a surplus purchase from the, from Washington County. The property was purchased initially to build the road. And so there's this small sliver on the south side as well. And so we, we see this as a great opportunity for the city to purchase this parkland for future support facilities for for the the region, for the area, for connectivity and supporting the the new modes of transportation in our community and outside of our community. So if there are any questions, we wanted to answer those as it's on, as a consent item this evening.
Questions for Ross? Councillor Hillier?
Oh, sorry. Thank you so much. How exciting. I'm just curious, you said that the new twelve foot sidewalks, so it's not about this, that it'll be available for new modes of transportation. Are you envisioning like motorized vehicles on the sidewalk then?
So, so how, what we're seeing right now is we're seeing folks riding, or they're riding bikes, they're, they're using scooters. What the the statutes look like in the future, we don't know. How how this all comes together, we're it's not as clear at this point in time, but what we do know is that those modes are going to be essential to to future travel. People are using them now. So the potential for future adjustment to statute or code to to make changes, I think, exists and would would obviously be much further down the road for consideration, but this provides an opportunity to consider that.
Because they're twelve feet. And so so obviously you're thinking safety at
Correct.
some point, because that
Yeah.
not necessarily the best mix. Just out of curiosity, what is the property to the, I guess, is that west of the proposed site eight fifty one? Is it just like?
Yeah, that is, the property just to the west is Clark Lumber.
Oh, yeah. Okay. I just didn't make that happen in my head. Yeah, I see it now. Thank you very much.
Other questions? Councillor President Pratt?
I just wondered what the topography of this parcel is like.
It's pretty flat.
It's flat.
Oh, nice. Okay.
There's a shop you can see on the lower east corner of the property. You can see the roof of the shop. There's a garage slash shop there that was there when this was privately owned before Washington County purchased it to build the road. And so that would come with the property. And the, you'll see in the consent item, the the property is we're we're paying just over thirty thousand dollars for this, which is a fantastic price for for our community. And so, so it's, we put the offer in initially several years ago with Washington County, and so we're now bringing it to you for consideration.
I just want to add that I, I think this is great and especially with the future planning, but also as that industrial park develops that, I mean, it'd be a nice little spot for people to have little picnics or something. I think it's great.
Yeah, councillor Pratt, you might, you may recall from the Park System Plan, Master Plan work, we heard from our business community doing that work that investing in employment land with parks, infrastructure and trails and support facilities like this is something that our community was really interested in. And so this would be sort of the the first real purchase or acquisition in line with what what shows up in that plan.
Councillor Brooks?
Thanks for the presentation. It's exciting. I just want to say one thing is just share my appreciation with you for the planning efforts that your department has made with looking at things with a whole plan and then getting the approval and then going through. It's like a really good way and very comprehensive. And I think that, I know we didn't have the conversation earlier, but it's the kind of thinking that I really appreciate when we're looking at things connected together. So thanks for all the effort in planning and community outreach. One question I had was to connect east, west, there's the northern, there's the more northern connection of the trails. Yeah. What is that?
Yeah, so the, the, you'll see the Ice Age Trail on the far west side. You'll see connections north and south, one of those being along the, along the west side of the Basalt Creek Canyon. And that trail, you'll see it sort of ends in an arrow south, which is a clear indication that there's future connectivity here into and outside of Wilsonville. And so we had through the planning process and the development of the Basalt Creek Parks Plan, we had multiple conversations with both Washington County and city of Wilsonville staff. And so city of Wilsonville is well aware that this is a, this is a desire of our community to create that north, south connectivity. And along the west side of the Basalt Creek Canyon, we are working with and and will continue to work with land, current landowners and future developers to figure out how to make this, this a reality and this trail, this this future trail a reality for folks.
So Brooks, were you asking about the north bit? No, 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 you.
I was asking east and west. There's two east, west ways to go across. One is the bridge, which from what I understand is going to be really expensive and there's a big question mark for a long time on that. And then there's one that's further north. And I'm just wondering what that connection, that north connection is.
Yeah, there's a that there is a clear, what we heard was there's a clear desire to figure out how and and where to cross, across the canyon. And that folks on the, on the west or east side really need to feel like they can, they can go back and forth. And so these two are indicators as to where we potentially could create crossings across the canyon. And so however, there's flexibility. And so as we work with development and developers through proposals in Basalt Creek area that that we work through with them and to figure out what the best alignment is, what the exact alignment is. And so if you look at the Basalt Creek Parks Plan, it talks about that need for flexibility and exact alignment. Yeah.
The one that curves up?
No.
If it would, if it would exist, what is it over there?
So that is currently a privately owned piece of property.
Okay.
On the, yeah, just south of our city limits.
Okay. That was my, that was my question. I'm just trying to get also a feeling of what all this is. So it's really exciting. And the trails in Wilsonville are strong, so it'll be nice to have a connection, especially with those wetlands. Anyway, thanks again for the presentation and all your work. And you too, Rich?
Thank you. I would, thank you, councillors. I I would, yeah, I would defer to Rich and 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 our team to to, you know, they've done a lot of, a lot of work to get us to this point. So thank you.
And across, any other questions for Ross? Thanks, Ross.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. All right, that brings us to our gender review and round table. Any questions on the consent agenda tonight? Any issues with it? All right, tonight, the Twalton Color Guard is gonna be doing, posting the colors in remembrance of nine eleven. So we doing a pledge allegiance or just the presentation of colors? They're just gonna post the colors?
Yeah, I'll do the pledge.
All right. And then as far as proclamations, I'm taking the September eleventh proclamation. Councillor Hillier has the Hispanic heritage and council president Pratt is doing national preparedness. All right. With that, we'll go ahead and do our round table. We'll start with councillor Hillier.
I have not had any meetings in the last.
Councillor Brooks?
No updates for me.
Councillor President Pratt?
I have just a couple. We met, the CCAA met and we met with some people for the Architectural Review Board and the Library Advisory Committee, somewhere to come on that. I had C four meeting last week and we met, oh, I gotta get my glasses on. Amelia Porterfield, she's a Regional Solutions Director for Governor Kotek, and she sounded like a good person to know if we have issues. And then we talked a lot about that nexus letter that I forwarded to everybody. And, oh, in Clackamas County, they got a grant and they put together this really cool. It's an interactive map. So if you're gonna travel anywhere on a bus, because there's different bus, little small bus systems in Clackamas County, like there's Smart, and then there's the one that goes up to Mount Hood. So there's all like at least half a dozen different little bus systems, kind of like our rides here. And so now they have an interactive map. You can go to rideclackamas.org and if you say where you're at, where you're going, just like the TriMet site, and it'll show you the routes and the times. I thought they did a really great job on that. And lastly, I went to the, I hope I didn't break an ordinance on this one, but I went to the Twalton Historical Society fundraiser and I auctioned up the mayor, so.
All right. On the thirtieth, Captain, keep doing it, Chief Pickering and I attended the TTSD Welcome Back event at Twalton High School. It was a lot of fun to, you know, get rally the teachers, get them all pumped up for a new school year. Chief Pickering had great speech of Twalton boy done good. Racing through the ranks, pretty much appreciate them being there. On the thirty first, I attended the WEA breakfast where Congresswoman Bonamichi was the featured speaker. She is concentrating on workforce training, solving the daycare dilemma for folks, focusing on transportation plan, especially the interstate bridge, figuring out where Congress is going to come up with that money. And speaking of money, going back to Washington DC where they have to pass twelve bills in order to get the budget passed, and most of them are stuck in party wrangling. So more likely we'll have a continuing resolution which imply, which imposes automatic cuts across. which imply, which imposes automatic cuts across the whole federal government. With, and that's because that's the deal they made. Uh, on the seventh, we had a R TAC meeting, the, basically the tolling committee meeting for Clackamas County where, um, Representative Hartman, Niran and Walters attended to bring them up to speed on what's going on in R TAC, how Clackamas County feels about tolling, because, uh, Representative Hartman is one of the representatives on the Special Subcommittee on Transportation. That, that's gonna start meetings supposedly late September, October to figure out how the transportation needs of the state are gonna be resolved, especially in terms of tolling and what's gonna move forward. So we're keeping them in the loop so they can keep us in the loop. Uh, especially with the Clackamas County contingent of legislators. So we're all solid in our, our messaging. On the eighth, on Friday, the Washington County Mayors have a meeting and the subject of the discussion is, uh, District Attorney Barton's Public Safety Letter that is rolling through the community. Uh, we're gonna ask he and, uh, Sheriff Garrett to attend next month to discuss some of, uh, public safety issues he's raised in his letter, uh, so that we can, um, talk to our county commissioners on what the priority should be in terms of public safety. Uh, yeah, Valerie auctioned me off on Saturday. I was the M C and auctioneer for most of the items. Was a nice event for the Twolton Historical Society, very well attended, gorgeous night. I get to have lunch with Mike Hannigan for the third year in a row. He likes having lunch with me. Yep. Uh, and this morning, uh, this afternoon, I attended the Aging Task Force. Uh, they gave lots of kudos to Captain Pickering. They're trying to stand up, uh, a You Are Not Alone program here in Twolton. Um, the Aging Task Force agreed that this is something they want to take on and work through, uh, with Chief and possibly with the Parks folks. Uh, so Susan is gonna start, Susan Nowak's gonna, uh, start consolidating some information, create a packet and take the show on the road and see if we can make this a possibility, looking at what has been, been done in Miracopa and Goodyear, Arizona. Basically, long and short of it, it's a program where volunteers keep in touch with seniors in your community uh, and calling them and doing welfare calls, making sure they're doing well. And then in the event, uh, there's a couple, three missed calls that the police department has asked to go do a wellness check on that person. Um, so we'll see, they know the big challenge is gonna be staffing it and having, you know, that pool of, uh, volunteers to make those calls and to follow up with the police department, but that's something they want to take on. So I don't doubt them. They've done a lot, so we'll see what happens with that. And that's all I have. So we're done a little bit early. So we'll go ahead and adjourn Work Session and we'll come back at seven o'clock with the, uh, Twolton Police Honor Guard posting the colors. We'll see you in about ten minutes.